Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, October 18, 2018, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. There are three members present, so a quorum has been established. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to address the planning commission today? Just raise your right hand. And do you swear to tell the truth to the Athens Planning Commission as you know it? Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes from previous meetings.
I've looked through. Yeah, I don't note any changes that he makes.
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
There are three in favor. There are two absentees. There are no cases today. Communications, Ohio University, new chilled water plant, North McKinley Avenue. Good morning. Mr. Saroy, do you care to introduce us to this?
Yes. Good afternoon, commissioners and public. This is a communication entitled 41, Site Plan Review for Ohio University's Chilled Water Plant. This is purely a communication. Ohio University is currently under designing a new, not under designing, but under designing a new chilled water plant to be located on North McKinley Avenue in Ohio University's Athens campus. The objective of this project is to connect a chilled water plant that would be tied into the campus district cooling system and will provide central cooling to a number of Ohio University buildings. The attached letter which was provided from Ohio University explains that they are invoking government property exemption under Athens Code 230319. Government property exemptions, which reads as follows: "The administrative authority of all governmental units, including city, township, county, state, and federal units, must make a reasonable attempt to ensure that their building and grounds conform to the regulations of the zoning code. When such authorities find they cannot conform to these regulations, they shall inform the planning commission in writing the nature and the reasons for such nonconformance." Some of the facts: The applicant is Ohio University Architect, Design and Construction, 160 West Union Street, Suite 154, Athens, Ohio. The parcel number is A as in alpha, 027070000400. Its zoning is R3. The current land use is an OU parking lot. The proposed land use is a chilled water plant. Proposed number of buildings is one. The building size is 17,142 gross square footage. And again, the surrounding land use is R3.
That's all. Thank you. Would a representative from Ohio University care to take the podium and address the commission? And just please state your name and, I guess, the department in which you work.
Good afternoon, or I guess, good morning, depending on your perspective. I am Steve Wood. I am the Chief Facilities Officer and Senior Associate Vice President for Facilities Management and Safety at Ohio University. We did not come with a presentation today to make to the planning commission, however, we are here to answer any questions you may have about the construction of our Chilled Water Plant 3 at the location identified.
Are there any questions from the audience at this point? Okay. Just a couple. As far as the location, can you give us some background as far as site location and, you know, the reasons behind that?
Sure. We identified that site primarily because when we look at our district system, we are suffering some capability or capacity on the east side of campus. And so when we were looking at that, we were identifying areas on the east side of campus that we could improve or add additional capacity to the plant. When we looked at our land holdings, that was a good location as far as its relationship to the rest of campus, as well as future growth in that area.
No question. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from CPP available who would like to address the commission right now? Sure, why don't you come on up? If you could state your name, who you work for?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning or afternoon. My name is Jeremy Young. I'm a lawyer at the law firm of Retzland-Andrus in Columbus. I represent CPP Athens 1 and its affiliates, which, as the commission probably knows, is the owner of the property immediately adjacent and to the south of the proposed chiller We do have a presentation we'd like to make if the commission would permit. Thank you. I guess first I should introduce the people who came with me. With me I have attorney David Fisher from Columbus, also Rick Margolis is the representative of our client, the owner, and Dave Anderson is the president of the company. Rick came here today all the way from California in order to be here today. That's how important and serious we consider the threat posed by the location and design of this chiller plant to be. CPP owns numerous apartment buildings in close proximity to the proposed location. They house over 1,200 OU students. In addition to the apartment buildings, CPP recently constructed a pool that is used by its many student residents, which is also in close proximity to the site of the proposed chiller. In addition to CPP, I understand that there are additional residential student housing complexes in close proximity to the proposed site just across McKinley Avenue. We understand there are approximately 300 additional students who reside in those facilities. And I also understand that one or more of the representatives of those property owners may be here today and wish to be heard as well. So altogether, there are over 1,500 OU students living in close proximity to the proposed location of this chiller, many of whom live as close as 100 feet away in the River Park It's not an exaggeration to say that what OU is attempting to do here is turn what is currently an open space in a residential area into an industrial park. When I say park, I understand that the current proposal is for one building, but as we understand it based on documents that were produced to us by the university, this is Phase 1, designed to create 2,500 tons of capacity for chilled water, and that ultimately the plan is to expand this site to a capacity of 7,500 or up to 10,000 tons capacity, including boiler facilities. So this is really the beginning of what we see as a much more involved development effort by the university. At the outset, I'd like to get some clarification, if I might, from the commission. Our understanding, based on emails that were produced to us by the university, is that the purpose of today's hearing is for the planning commission to learn about the chiller proposal, and that it intends to do one of three things. And this was coming, I believe, from a conversation that was had with Director Saraw by the university. It would either approve the application, approve it with conditions, or disapprove it, which is what we think the commission should do. Am I correct in understanding that?
Not in today's session. Today's session is just a communication session.
Okay.
So, you know, we would take information that you, Ohio University, or somebody else in the audience would like to inform us of, and then at a later meeting, we would have the proposal come before the commission, and at that point, we would vote and make a recommendation on that.
Is that a recommendation to council?
That would be a recommendation to council, I believe.
Typically, it is a recommendation to council, but at this point, it's just a hearing. This is simply a hearing to listen to the proposal, both, you know, those bringing it forward, as well as opposition. But again, there's some interesting nuances with state property within the city of Athens.
Right. Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Did the commissioners receive the letter that my office sent out yesterday regarding CPP's opposition to the chiller?
Yes.
Okay. And is that a part, like, an official part of the planning commission's record going forward?
That would be put into the records, yes.
Okay. Very good. As the commission knows, we have a court reporter here today, and we called ahead of time to make sure that was okay. I'd like to give the court reporter a copy of the letter, just so that the record that we're maintaining is complete as well.
Sure.
If that's okay. And I'm sensitive to the committee's time this afternoon. I don't want to take all of our time talking about what's in the letter. The letter's now been entered as a part of the record, and on our record has been labeled as Exhibit 1. There are a few key points that I do want to address, however. The first thing I want to make sure that, at least from our perspective, well, we believe the planning commission's function and the legal standard that's applicable to this application is that, you know, first and foremost, fundamentally, we want the commission to discharge its duty to apply the zoning code for the benefit of the community, the well-being and the safety of the community. And we want to make sure that the planning commission understands that it has an important function to play with respect to this application. Under Section 230102 of the Athens City Ordinances, the zoning code, which this body is charged with enforcing, was enacted for the purpose of promoting the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens of Athens, and to protect property rights of all individuals by assuring compatibility of uses and practices within zones. Now, we understand that the law in Ohio gives the sovereign, such as the state instrumentality, like the university, a lot of leeway when it comes to compliance with zoning, municipal zoning codes. But the important thing to note is that leeway is not unlimited. There's a landmark Ohio Supreme Court decision from 1980, which is called the Brownfield versus State case, which held that the state may be entitled to an exemption from zoning requirements, but it's only after the state has made a reasonable effort to comply with local zoning. That same standard is embodied in the Athens City Ordinances, Section 2303.19, which Director Saraw read at the outset. I won't read it again, but I would note for your information that the threshold showing before a letter is to be sent to the planning commission by the university is that it must make a reasonable attempt to ensure that the buildings and grounds conform to the regulations of the zoning code. Now, what you're ultimately going to have to decide as a decision-making body is whether OU has done enough to comply with zoning code in the design and location of this chiller. Based on what we've seen, we don't believe that any attempt was actually made to comply with the zoning code. Rather, it appears to us that Ohio University simply selected the site and the design specifications based on its own internal considerations, and that therefore OU would not be entitled to proceed under the government exemption provision. Now, to be clear, we are not proposing that the university does not have the authority to build this chiller facility. Certainly, clearly, it has the ability to put it somewhere, and it's probably a necessary step. What we want is to ensure merely that the university satisfies the requirements under Ohio law, which means it cannot build in a location, the location proposed, until it makes the showing that it attempted compliance with the zoning code. When CPP first found out that OU was proposing to construct the chiller tower in the location selected, it had a number of concerns. Number one, its proximity to CPP's apartment buildings and pool. Number two, its excessive height, the noise pollution it would produce, its architectural design, which is not consistent with the surrounding structures or with the university area generally. And the fact that it's inconsistent with 2016 master plan for the university, which identifies North McKinley Avenue as one of only two major vehicular gateways to campus, which is to be enhanced. And in our opinion, the construction of the chiller plant in the proposed location would have the exact opposite effect. As I said, our letter set forth all of these concerns in considerable detail, so I won't go into them each individually. But just to give the commission a little bit more background, CPP representatives met on a couple occasions with OU to discuss CPP's concerns, and requested information and documents from the university relating to such things as alternative locations and alternative architectural designs. Now, OU promised to provide this information, and it ultimately did provide some information. However, it was not what was promised, the full extent of what was promised, and we needed more information. So as a result, we were forced to serve a public records request on the university on October 5. Among other things, we asked for documents relating to site selection, alternative locations, any analyses that were done regarding zoning code compatibility, and alternative designs. Two days ago, on October 16, the university produced documents in response to that public records request. To be perfectly honest with you, OU's document production raises more questions than it answers, particularly with respect to site selection, which the chairman already has asked a question Now, as a decision-making body, I would urge this commission to demand more complete information from the university, so it can fairly evaluate whether OU satisfied its legal burden to attempt to comply with the zoning code in the siting and design of this facility. The only document that was produced to us that related to the siting of the facility was the 2017 utility master plan for the Athens campus of OU. That plan identified seven different location alternatives for the chiller. Now, interestingly, the location that was selected by OU, which is known as Parking Lot 50, is not even listed in the plan as a potential alternative site for the chiller. It appears that that site was actually selected later for unknown reasons, and from what we can tell, did not go through the site selection process that the university applied to the seven locations it had identified. Now, the closest alternative site geographically to Lot 55, and it may be helpful to direct the commission's attention to this forward, here's the proposed chiller site on Lot 55. The proposed alternative site that was closest to that location is up here at this intersection of North McKinley Avenue and Mill Street, which the utility master plan identifies as the rugby fields. Now, turning back to the seven locations that were actually in the plan, the university scored those locations based on 19 different categories of factors it considered significant. It divided those into two broad categories, architectural and engineering. The engineering categories related largely to cost considerations for the university. Notably, none of the factors, none of the 19 factors, had anything to do with either zoning code compliance or with the proximity to residential structures. Now, that being the case, the university still went through with the scoring process and ranked the sites in order of preference. The site that scored the highest in the site selection process, meaning it was the most desirable, was actually nowhere near Parking Lot 50. Rather, it's at the tennis bubble facility on South Campus near the golf course, which is not even pictured on the aerial we have here. However, the master plan indicates that for reasons that are not explained, senior management at the university decided that the tennis bubble was not a viable option. The master plan then indicates that the rugby fields location would be selected, even though that location was only tied for third in the site selection scoring process, and even though building it there would cost an additional $2 million more than the second highest scored option, which is located at the existing West Green plant. Now, significantly, that intersection, the rugby field intersection, North McKinley and Mill Street, is one of the alternative sites proposed by CPP in its letter. And there's actually a parking lot at the northeast corner of that intersection that is already owned by Ohio University. This location is directly across McKinley Avenue from property that is zoned M for industrial uses. The chilled water plant would be far more compatible with buildings that are permitted in that zoning classification than in the R3 zoning classification in the midst of all of this student housing and the 1,500 students who live there. Now, the other alternative proposed by CPP in the letter is within the athletic fields closer to US 33, and that also appears to be within the greater area of what is identified as the rugby fields in the master plan. And that site also has the virtue of not being right on top of residential housing, which is why it's being proposed as a potential alternative. So when you look at the information, even according to OU's master plan for utilities, both of the alternative sites proposed by CPP in its letter are more appropriate for the chiller facility than is Lot 50, which is what OU selected for unknown reasons. Now, among the other documents that were produced in response to our request was an email from September 14 by, from Greg Robertson at Ohio University. It was an internal email to other OU individuals, and summarized a meeting that was held on September 6 with representatives of CPP regarding the chiller. And it indicates that OU representatives learned for the first time at that meeting, in talking to my clients, that the university actually has a legal obligation to attempt, at least attempt, to comply with the zoning code with respect to the chiller facility. Before that time, as the documents we've received bear out, there was no consideration given or discussion regarding that legal obligation. It seems that the university was completely ignorant of that obligation, from what we can tell. And of course, that begs the obvious question: How could the university possibly satisfy the legal burden that it has to show an attempt to comply with the zoning code when, until a month ago, long after the fact, it wasn't even aware that that obligation existed? Shifting gears to talk about another area where there are more questions than answers is with respect to the sound study commissioned by OU for this project. OU engaged Assentec to perform a preliminary sound study, and that sound study was discussed in detail in our letter, as was another report that CPP commissioned by Henderson Engineers to evaluate, review and evaluate the Assentec report. Focusing on the Assentec report, perhaps the most salient takeaway is the fact that it found that the chiller facility will produce a constant sound on the magnitude of a passing freight train for CPP's residents at the nearby apartment complexes. It's also incomplete in a number of alarming ways and inaccurate, as noted by the Henderson report. Just briefly, it understates the level of noise that will be produced by the cooling towers. It overstates the effectiveness of the proposed mitigation, noise mitigation steps that Assentec recommends. It sets a sound criteria that is inappropriately high for a quiet residential area like this student housing area. And even if that threshold is met, based upon the decibel levels that will be produced and the way that human physiology perceives those decibels, the sound that will be produced will be double what the current sound landscape is in that area. And finally, it accounts for only the noises produced by the cooling towers on top of the facility, and not for all the additional sounds and noise that will be produced by this plant when it's constructed, things like exhaust fans, air handling units, and the like. Thus, the noise pollution identified in the Assentec study, which is bad enough as it is, understates its true magnitude. Indeed, the Henderson report indicates, and you can read about this in our letter, that the chiller will violate the Athens City Noise Ordinance, which is 130410 of the Code of Ordinances. And importantly, one of the criteria that this planning commission is charged to evaluate when considering this application is whether there will be any nuisances created by the project, in specific, any sound nuisances that will be imposed upon abutting properties. Based upon all this, I would urge the commission to require a more detailed and comprehensive, reasonable, sound study from the university before it takes any action to approve this You know, as a matter of fact, I happen to personally sit on the planning commission in my hometown in Granville, and we review sound studies such as this. And I would hazard a guess, based on that experience, that if a sound study like the Assentec study came before this body by a private developer, it would not be acceptable. And I urge the commission to hold the university to the same standard. In conclusion, I would reiterate that this planning commission is empowered and duty-bound to carefully evaluate OU's proposal and to require compliance with the zoning code unless OU satisfies its burden to show that it attempted to comply with zoning and was unable to do so. We would submit that the letter submitted to the planning commission by OU falls far short carrying that burden. And on the record that currently exists, it appears that OU has completely failed to show any effort to comply with the zoning code. Indeed, as we saw, it seems they didn't even know about it. In a situation like this, this commission has the authority to deny OU's attempt to proceed with construction of the chiller plant in the proposed location under the government exemption provision that OU is invoking. And it should do so for the benefit of not only CPP and the other property owners in the area, but also for the 1,500 students who call it this area home during the school year. And just to reiterate, like I said at the outset, we're not proposing that OU is not able to construct this facility. We simply want it to be built at a different location, and one that makes sense from a planning perspective and the perspective of safeguarding the health and well-being of the community. At this time, I'd welcome any questions you might have, and then I would like to turn it over, if I could, to Rick Margolis, my client representative. Do you have any questions? Okay. Rick?
Thank you very much.
My name is Rick Margolis. My company is Columbus Pacific Properties. We have about 10,000 student housing beds across the country. We have 1,200 here at the university. And my attorney did a pretty good job of laying out what the standards are. We understand, and I understand as a developer and owner of property all over the country, that the states have rights that individual citizens don't have, because they have obligations that individual citizens don't have. But those rights aren't unlimited. You know, they can take houses for a road. They can take certain things, but that right isn't unlimited. And the only rights that we have as citizens against the state are commissions like yours. And all over the country, the standards are about the same. In California, where I come from, it's called least impactful alternatives. Here it's called, did you reasonably try to comply with the code? And the reason why that standard there is, it's obvious, right? Because if it's but for bodies like yours, states and municipalities, they can do whatever they want, and we have no recourse against them. So as my attorney said, it's not that they can't build this. Of course, they can. They need it. But they have to show that it's reasonable. And just, and that's all I'm really here to talk about is reasonableness. I want to point something out. This, actually, back here. This building over here, so a few years ago, the church behind River Park wanted to sell its property because they were moving locations. And we bought it to put up student housing. And we did our analysis and hired our architects and our engineers, and we did analysis, and we have, as you can see, eight-story buildings surrounding this building. And we thought it'd be reasonable to put up a four-story student housing complex there. Code allows three and a half stories. So we were looking for a half-story variance. We came before the city saying that it's a three-and-a-half-story building surrounded by our eight-story buildings. It's not going to affect anybody's view shed. We think it's reasonable. Can we get a half a story exemption? And the BZI said no. And the reason why they said no is they said, look, we have zoning codes, we have ordinances, and we have rules, and people need to abide by, and they need to comply. And if we give you an exemption, then we're going to have somebody else an exemption, and it's just not right. So even though it's only surrounded by you, and it's tucked all the way back over here, the the answer to us was no. So, we said, fine. We went back and redesigned, and they told us to take off the top story. So, we took off the top story. That decision cost us maybe $2 to $3 million for a top story up at that building back here. The height that we were proposing that was turned down comes to about here on this building. We were told no, because back here it was too obnoxious. When I first saw this exhibit from Ohio University, I got, my first reaction was I laughed. I said, no, that can't be real. It can't be wanting to do this right in front of a residential neighborhood? And so, we started to look into it, and I found out that, no, it's not, no, it's yeah. That's what they plan on doing. So, I flew out to have a conversation with them, because clearly, if a building back here this high is obnoxious, how can this be okay? So, we flew out, I had a meeting with the, with the university, and as my attorney said, they had no idea, they even had to try to comply with the zoning ordinances, no idea. And the minutes will show, or emails will show in there that that was the first time it was ever addressed by them. And all their analysis up to then was just what's good for them, not what's good for us, not what's good for our 1,200 students or the students across the way, not what's a good studying environment for these kids to study in and finals, which we take pretty seriously on all our housing projects throughout the country. And so, when we had the conversation, we, we just asked them simple things. I didn't even know that they had alternative studies done. But we said, well, why don't you just slide the building over to the side? Right? You can build anything you want. At this location, it's against the freeway, the freeway's up high, it's not going to bother anybody. This is our property over here, too. So, we're not saying don't do it in our neighborhood, but why don't just slide it over there? Why not put it up over here where the zoning is manufacturing? That's a little more compatible. It's still obnoxious, it's still on the main road, but at least it's in a manufacturing area, not in the middle of a residential neighborhood. We got no answers. When we designed our building, we tried to, this is it down here, too, there's a close-up of it, we tried to comply with the architectural standards of the neighborhood. We always try to be a good neighbor, want to fit in, we want to know what the neighbors want and what they don't want. So, we fit in. This construction isn't inexpensive, to be honest, Rick, it's expensive. We got a little bit of a contemporary flair to it, but we kept it in keeping with the neighborhood. This they want to put out in front of everybody, a big metal class building? So, I guess what, all I'm saying is, you have the authority to require them to be fair. You have the authority to protect the kids who live in this neighborhood. There's another landowner here who didn't know anything about this process. I've owned my company for 25 years. I've never been involved with a development where the community wasn't involved in the planning, where the stakeholders weren't given an opportunity to talk and have a discussion about what everybody wanted in advance. So, we can talk about different alternatives. You know, this decision cost me $3 million. Moving this building off to the side to protect a residential neighborhood will cost a few million dollars. But does the money matter? It's enforcing the rules, I think, is what matters. Keeping a neighborhood a neighborhood is what matters. And they're all alternative. They come back, by the way, and they say, and they show you that we tried everything. There's not a location on any of our property that works. There's not a location on any of our property. We, we sized the most quiet equipment possible, which, by the way, nothing in the report shows. They have one site, one selection piece of equipment. I've been told that there's quieter equipment, there's better options, they haven't even been considered. That's the obligation that they have to you. So, I'll let other people, I'm just, I'm here to just ask for fairness. They can do what they want to do, yes, but you have the authority to make them the least impactful to the entire community and to violate your rules the least amount possible. That's all we're asking that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who cares to address the commission? Just come forward, Mr. Denon. Oh. And if you could just state your name and home address, please. Would you want to get to the podium there? Thanks.
Sure. My name's Dan DeLuca. So, yeah, I own the property next to where the proposed site is going at 10 Milliron Street, which is actually probably closer than what these guys' property is. I found out about this whole thing less than 24 hours ago. So, there's a few, I guess, a few observations that I want to make about this. Ohio University has definitely shown their students the right to peace and quiet in their dorms and their housing, and they've done a great job of it. Obviously, they have RAAs on every, every floor to keep noise down. Obviously, they do any loud music, any of that type of stuff. With what's being proposed here is, is extremely noisy from what we've seen so far. You have 1,500 kids that are in direct access to this area. Now, that's 1,500 out of approximately 9,500 students that live off-campus. That's 16, approximately 16% of the kids are going to be affected by this, of Ohio University students. Think about that number for a second. 16%. That's, that's a large amount of kids that will be affected by this location. With these noises and that kind of thing, we all know that this does cause students to have worse study habits, there's problems with irritability and that kind of thing. Obviously, the city will be getting a lot of phone calls from students, because I know you do on noise complaints as is. This area is also considered, isn't this a high-density built area down there as far as for housing, Rick? Okay, so it is a high-density area, and that was, that's what the city planned was all along, was to have this whole area as a high-density area. So, that's, that's what it is. Now, we want to stick a factory right in the middle of it, okay? And this is causing, this would cause a lot of problems with a lot of kids. I'm sure if you went around to the, to the community and talked to people, like I said, I wasn't informed at all until less than 24 hours ago. Tony Ferring from Bobcat Reynolds was not informed at all. This is the first we've heard of it. And, like I said, we, our property's probably actually closer than what Thursday's. So, if Thursday's a freight train, then I guess ours is going to be a tornado, because I really, I really don't know. We haven't seen any studies, haven't heard anything about this at this point. So, I'm sorry, hold on a second, guys. I've not heard anything on the sound studies at all, I mean, with our property. I guess they did one on River Park and that area, but not, not on ours. This, like I said, the biggest damage this will do is to 1,500 of OU students. That, that's what we're talking about here. So, we really got, I mean, it needs to be considered here on what the effects of this is really going to be. It's not, it's not just, okay, it's noise or whatever. I mean, just imagine if housing all around, all around town had that kind of noise coming from them 24 hours a day. Think about what kind of a mess we're going to have, okay? This, and like I said, is obviously, Ohio University's going to do what they have to do for the betterment of the school, and I understand that, that there are other locations that, that could be looked at. It seems like this kind of thing has, trying to be phoned under the radar, because I'm sure if you went around to the community, asked, all the households in this town, and 90% of them are going to look at this factory and say, what's going on here? This is supposed to be one of the main gateways to Ohio University, and I don't think that's representing what, you know, our, our town or our university or any of that stuff. And I'm not, and I'm not sure where the process is at this point, but with, with, you know, all the considerations here, I think the right thing just needs to be done here. And doing the right thing is not putting it next to a bunch of students and affecting 1,500 people. If, you know, if, if it wasn't a problem, why isn't it built next to the dorms? So, I mean, that's, that's the biggest thing that I see here. I hope you guys really consider this, because I know just with any, there's multiple variances that should be in place for the average person that was going to try to do something with this, and I'm sure they would, they would be turned down. I've been at a variance board several times, and I, I've got a good idea on all, all that stuff works. So, please give us a consideration of what you're doing, the damage you're doing to these kids, and the problems that this is going to create in this town. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I return to you, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to address the commission?
And before you do, I have a comment, and it is just a comment, a point of clarification, and that is that, you know, under the city's comprehensive plan, and this is in reference to the comment made about this being a high-density area, yes, there's a lot of students who live there, but the city of Athens does not have a zoned area that is an R4 high-density housing area. We go as high as R3, which is multi-unit, which is an apartment complex. But to the comment made, I just want that to be clear, that the city of Athens does not have anywhere that is zoned R4 high-density. But to acknowledge, Mr. DeLuca, yes, there's a large number of students who live in that area.
Okay, but that was, I think that was part of the original comprehensive plan, wasn't it?
It was. Well, what was, what was under the comprehensive plan was to have an R4 neighborhood area.
And this was the intended area.
Is there anyone else before, have no one else? Okay, go ahead.
Again, Steve Wood, Chief Facilities Officer, Senior Associate Vice President for Facilities Management and Safety. Just want to, I guess you could say, address a few of the comments that were made here. The, one of the early ones was that we would be expanding the site, and it was talked about extra chillers and boilers. The capacity of the plant is as described, but it's within the existing footprint. So, there is not an intent to expand that bigger by adding more capacity in the future. So, it's being built with 2,500 tons and space within its walls to add the additional chillers that are needed. The, as far as the proactively addressing and following the zoning code, I, we freely admit that we were not aware that we needed to write a letter, but I would say that some of the information being shared here today shows that we were designing this from start to finish with the community in mind, including our sound study, where we worked within design parameters to minimize the sound, and I'll have one of our more knowledgeable folks come up here and address that in just a second, but also the fact that it was available when we needed to submit, submit the letter. Our letter, 925 to the Planning Commission, also talked about the mitigation measures we had taken for height requirements to lower the height and still remain within the floodplain. So, there are special building requirements, I'm sure from a zoning perspective, that need to, to do that. From a major gateway perspective, this depiction right here, we did not change our mind on the major gateway. This shows it as the major gateway, and there will be slides today at the Board of Trustees available to the public that show a rendering of this in that regard when I speak to them, probably around 2 o'clock to 2:30 today. As far as the citing options go and the fact that we seem to not be answering questions, on September 19th, we did provide the cost for this option right here. After we had met with the owners of River Park or the representatives, we provided an email to Dave Anderson on September 19th, sharing the cost of $5.4 million to move what is depicted here over to that site along the bike path or closer to South Green Drive. We did hold public our requests, actually, we held and put in the newspapers, et cetera, for public forums on August 1st. We even included in our communication the ability to get online and do a survey about what you thought about, any individuals thought about this project. So, we were well ahead of that from the communication and trying to do outreach with the community. As far as the aspects of the different citing locations within the, the utility master plan and the scoring of those, as we went through the process, and the, the utility master plan started the process that ultimately led to our construction, to our plant, we were informed by better information as we did additional studies. And part of that was engagement with the city and community as far as ability and where the utilities are, et cetera, and that informed ultimately our location. And at this point, I would like to call John Cozad up and speak on behalf of this, the noise aspects of this and the study that we conducted. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm John Cozad, Director for Infrastructure Projects with Ohio University Architecture, Design and Construction. I just wanted to respond to one comment about noise of the chiller plant. There was a comment made that it would be similar to having a freight train drive through or next to the apartments, and that, that's the level of noise that would be experienced at River Park Towers. So, as a point of clarification, I believe what's being referenced is if you, if you were sitting on the roof of the plant five feet away from the cooling towers, the approximate noise level is 74 decibels. 70 decibels is approximately what a freight train sounds like at 100 feet away. So, 74 decibels if you were sitting on the roof of the building, 70 decibels is a train at 100 feet away. And what we've actually modeled with the noise mitigation that we've put in place is that will be, in the 46 to 48 decibels will be the level of noise at 195 feet, which is the closest point of River Park's buildings to, to the cooling towers of our facility. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. We also did, as part of our study, measure the ambient noise levels in the local area. So, the, the measured levels were 41 to 43 decibels, and what we're able to achieve with our mitigation is a noise level of 46 decibels. Are there any questions or any clarification?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Did you do the study on Milliron as well, and the level, because that's actually closer than River Park?
Yeah, so, so there is, the closest residence is 165 feet, so River Park is 195 feet. We have modeled that. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but we do have the, the report that shows what those noise levels are.
So, we all know. But we do know.
We do.
Excuse me, excuse me. Sir, could you state your name and, you'll need to come up to the podium, please.
Were there other questions?
There is one other. I mean, since we're talking freight trains and other things, can you give us a sense of what 46 decibels is?
So, 50 decibels is the approximate noise level inside an average residential household, you know, with the, the normal activities in a house. There was also, I think, a statement of a vacuum cleaner and what that sounds like. So, a vacuum cleaner running at 10 feet away is approximately 70 decibels as well, but 50 decibels is the normal, average noise within a household. So, we're actually slightly below that.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Vince Jarrett with RMF Engineering. What we looked at with the, with the noise study is actually, most of the noise is submitted off the fronts of the building, minimal off the sides. So, the critical point was what John discussed earlier. People across the street are actually going to experience less than the folks at River Park.
But what's, what's that number across the street, then?
I can get it to you, I don't have it off with me right now, but we do have this part of the study.
Well, because I, I mean, we've never been informed of anything again.
I can get that to you.
I mean, how soon can we get it?
Yep.
I mean, because there's decisions to be made here.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Suray, Mr. Lo, did you care to say anything at this time? Nothing? Okay. Thank you very much, then. We'll close that. A report from the city planner.
Just a few things this afternoon. The first is to report, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the Athens County Regional Planning Commission, we do have a ad hoc committee serving to help find the, the right path for the Plains area of unincorporated Athens Township and unincorporated Dover Township to assist them with their goals of having a zoning ordinance there. So, we had a first meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we're going to have our follow-up meeting tentatively scheduled for next Friday, October 26th at 3:30 PM at Athens High School in the Plains. We think we're getting closer to basically coming down to what is the desired way if they want to move forward with zoning, likely something where there's a, a shared governance between Dover and Athens Townships with one single planning commission that services both, both areas. We've asked the township trustees from both townships to provide us with a map of what they believe to be their area of the Plains, since it's an unincorporated community. So that we can use that as our starting point. The other issue or the other topic that I've been working on extensively is the city's comprehensive plan update. We've been having meetings recently with our city's Disabilities Commission and other people involved in our disabilities community. They've been incredibly helpful to better understand the needs for disabled Athenians and some of the things that we might be able to address in our comprehensive plan. We've also been working really well with students at Ohio University. We did three recent workshops. We did one at Clippinger Hall, one in front of the county courthouse, to try to get students to talk about safety and housing issues, which are the two issues that we've heard the most about from students this year. Concerns about lighting, concerns about dark spaces, but also frustrations over off-campus housing. And then we did a forum with students a week ago, targeting better understanding of issues with diversity and inclusion on campus versus off-campus, and how Athens can be a more welcoming community for people from other areas of minorities and diverse, diverse populations. So it's been going really well. Looking to have some sort of a report out on all the things that we've heard and learned over the last several months coming out in about a month. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Lo, Planner Lo.
Yes.
Would you, would you like to give an update on the meeting that was just recently held with Chris Schmank and Price Finley from Bricker &amp; Eckler about tools that can be used in the city for housing development?
Absolutely. You may need to fill me, help me out a little bit, Mayor, to have a notes with me on that. But we did, we have been speaking, trying to learn more about different strategies to do tax increment financing, to assist with how to get roads and infrastructure built and things for real estate that's inside the city limits so that we can make that perform to where we want it to, areas like university estates and other undeveloped areas around the city. There are some tools available through a TIF model where you can focus on residential areas as opposed to commercial areas. I think the only TIFs we've utilized in the city are on East State Street, which was when we widened East State Street from three to five lanes, and that was a commercial area, so that TIF is invested, is financed the infrastructure improvements that were done back early 2000s, late 90s? I forget when that was.
I believe it was around 2003, 2002 timeframe.
Sounds right. Okay. So we're looking at some strategies where we could apply a TIF to residential areas to see if we can get some performance out of that land?
Yeah, that's a good synopsis. It was interesting, because the main thing that the city was in conversation with Bricker &amp; Eckler on was for neighborhood development or redevelopment, which is, as most of us would contend, is an area where we could certainly use some improvement in the city with our housing stock. And we learned a lot. We think that we have some opportunities to, to help developers develop in the city of Athens, and more to come.
Thank you. Mr. Suray?
Yes. This week, we are going to be meeting with the, a cross-cultural communications course at the Scripps College of Communication to discuss signage with students and their concerns. The Service Safety Director and myself and the Police Chief will be attending this little conference to address some of the issues that they asked of us. Last week, I attended the FINA, which is the Far East Neighborhood Association, and had an evening meeting with them, and we discussed all sorts of concerns. And I, I think it was a positive turnout. I addressed a lot of their concerns, and they have a better understanding of what code is responsible for and what we can do for them. Thank you.
Anything else I'd like to add? Thank you very much, Mr. Suray. An opportunity right now for citizens to speak about items not covered in today's agenda. Thank you very much. Announcements and other business?
Just one announcement. As everyone knows, that there will be a temporary street closing on Court Street this weekend with the Ohio University Homecoming Parade, which will start at 10:00 AM, if I'm not mistaken. The parade route will pretty much stay the same. And then, just as a heads up, since we won't have a planning commission until after the 27th, the 27th, there will also be planning ahead a rather significant street closing on Court Street for the Halloween Block Party coming up. So, and I do encourage people to come and attend Honey for the Heart Parade, which will be at 6:00 PM on Court Street, again, on the 27th of October.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting will be November 1st, 2018. With the business of the Athens City Planning Commission concluded, this missing, meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much.